Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting for September 2nd, 2008 to order. First thing on the agenda as always is the roll call and determination of the quorum. Jackie, if you would, please.
Quaker.
Here.
Olson. Kroger. Hurlbut. Hadcock. LaCroy.
Here.
Martinson. Whitehead.
Here.
Ocrebkey.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Jackie. Let's see. Do we have Bob Evans in the audience with us? If not, next thing on the agenda is our invocation. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence, that will be followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the eternal liberty of our Constitution.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the actual adoption of the agenda. If you have any items that you'd like added to the agenda, would you please turn on your light? As mayor, I do have a 1A, which is a resolution setting a special election. There'll be 1A. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Please turn on your light. Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Yes, we just need to put on the agenda how many people are coming to the special council meeting tomorrow night. Jackie needs to know the attendance, so however we want to put that on the agenda, Mayor.
Why don't we put that under items from Alderman? Find it on our -- let's see. Let's do a 59A. And then special counsel. And we'll put that under Deb. Okay, any additional items to be placed on the agenda? If so, please turn on your light. Any additional? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 1A and 59A. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ron, did you have something you wanted to add, or did you have--
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add an update from Central State's fair results.
Okay, let's do that as a 59B. And that will be Ron. Very good. So, just for clarification, the motion on the floor is for adoption of the agenda with the addition of 1A, 59A, and 59B. Is that correct? Any additional items to be added to the agenda? If not, everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the approval of the minutes for the August 18th, 2008, special council meeting and for the August 11th, 2008, August 12th, 2008, and August 21st, 2008 council meetings. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Say chief, could you go out and invite the Little Leaguers in? We're to that point already. I think we're moving a little bit faster than what they anticipated.
Yeah, see the police officers trying to get them.
There we go. Well, it's nice to see these young men again. And let me just read this resolution. And it reads, "Whereas the City of Rapid City, South Dakota hereby recognizes the achievements of the Canyon Lake Little League All-Star in winning the Midwest Regional Tournament and advancing to the Little League World Series, and whereas, the City of Rapid City commends the coaches and the players of the Canyon Lake Little League All-Stars for the first-ever appearance of a South Dakota team in the Little League World Series and for bringing such high honor to our community. They have shown our community and the entire nation what teamwork and sportsmanship is all about. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Rapid City acting by and through the Mayor, Alan Hanks, and the city council that the following names of the players and the coaches be kept in a permanent record of the City of Rapid City and that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the 2008 Canyon Lake Little League All-Star team with the official seal of the City of Rapid City." And I'm going to ask the coach to come up and just say a few words. And let me just start by saying, "We've heard nothing but good things about the sportsmanship, and we are so proud of how you represented Rapid City." Please, Coach, if you can, come on. Come on up.
Well, we'd just like to thank the City of Rapid City and the state of South Dakota, actually. We got a lot of good compliments and fundraising and all the media attention. It was great for the kids. And I was just really, real proud of all the kids, how they acted, and also how they played as a team and really sacrificed for the whole team. So, they all did a great job, and I'm just very proud of them. Thank you.
If I could have the council possibly gather behind me, let's get a picture.
Yeah, you want them to slide down?
Yeah, once you get in the middle, we'll go right in the middle. Thank you. Thank you.
That kid, Fiero, his--
Thank you, guys. And yes, your number-one fan asked you to sign a baseball, and that's Alderman LaCroy, so that's-- I forgot to bring a baseball. I think someone needs to make a motion that Lloyd has to share with everyone. Okay, let's move on. Thank you so much. Item 1A, and that is a letter. It should be in your packets. And this is a letter from Alderman Bob Hurlbut. And I'm going to read this, if I could, please. Dear Mayor Hanks, due to the recent circumstances, I believe that it is in the best interest of the City of Rapid City and all involved for me to resign my office as Ward Five Alderman. I would like to thank the voters of Ward Five and the citizens of Rapid City for the opportunity they gave me to serve for the last four years. My resignation will allow my replacement to be cited during the November general election, which will save taxpayers' dollars while ensuring a high voter turnout. I look back fondly and with great pride upon the many accomplishments for the City of Rapid City and the people of Ward Five, of which I've been part of. I truly regret that I will not be able to complete my term as Ward Five Alderman. I wish nothing but the best for the City of Rapid City, and I hope that I will have the opportunity to serve the community in the future again. I trust that you will convey my resignation to the full council." With that, I think the appropriate motion that the chair would look for is a motion to accept the resignation of Bob Hurlbut from Ward Five. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you be willing to briefly describe the process from here on out?
If we can. Why don't we take this up, and that's a very good point, Alderman Quaker. We'll take that up immediately after the vote. Any other discussion? Let me just state that I think anytime we have someone who's willing to put their time and their talent into serving the citizens of Rapid City, we need to acknowledge that. And I think we need to thank Alderman Hurlbut for his service for the last four years and wish him well into the future. With that, seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this point, there should also, let's see, Jason Green, did we pass the resolution down to the diocese? There is a resolution in front of you. And Jason, do you just want to go through the process real quick as far as setting up a special election?
Certainly, Mayor. As I'm sure the council will remember, a recent change in state law allows vacancies on council to be filled by an election rather than by an appointment process. And this council has adopted a resolution to require that all vacancies on the council be filled by election. In order to conduct the election, it's required that we provide notice to the public twice in two consecutive weeks, at least 60 days in advance of the election. If the council agrees tonight to set the election at the general election on Tuesday, November 4th, we would be able to get the notice published on Thursday. That would be 61 days prior to the election. So, action by the council tonight is absolutely necessary if you want to have the election in conjunction with the general election in November. There would be 30 days in which anyone who is interested from Ward Five to take out a petition and return it to City Hall with the appropriate numbers of signatures to get on the ballot. And then, obviously, 30 days after that wouldn't be the election. So, the resolution that's in front of you formalizes your acceptance of Alderman Hurlbut's resignation and sets the special election on November 4th.
Thank you. If we could have a motion, please. Do we have a second? Okay, the motion and the second is to pass a resolution to clear in a vacancy and setting a special election for November 4th. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry. Let's go to Alderman Bill Ocrebkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the latitude. Was there a termination date effective, was there an effective date to--
It was immediate.
So, it's not, so it's right now, he's off at right now?
Yes, yes. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the question. Next thing on the agenda is the general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss and express comments and concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the city council members present. This is the time where anyone from the public can get up and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. I do not have a speaker request form. And just a couple comments. If you have, if you wish to speak to any item, we do have speaker request forms. They're over on the media table over here to your left. If you could fill that out, including the agenda number, and then turn it in to Jackie at the end of the diocese here. That way, we can make sure that we recognize you when the item comes up. The other reminder is the fact that if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you could please put that in the vibrate mode, turn it off or otherwise destroy it, we'd appreciate it. And with that, we will, since we have no public comment periods, do you have anything for the public comments? Nope. Very good. We will move on. We're on to the non-public hearing items. This is items 2 through 60, and the chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period for items 2 through 46, please. So move. Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to open the public comment period on items 2 through 46. All those, any additional comments, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see what we got here. A speaker request. We do have a speaker request on items 13 and 16 from Diane Doll. Items 13 and 16. And as always, we do have timer lights up here during this period. We do allow three minutes. And Diane, we know who you are, but if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Diane Doll. I live at 1333 Panorama Circle. And I just have a question. I noticed when I was reading your agenda that Jason Green and Joel Landine are on the attendance list when, on number 13, for the approval for the South Dakota Municipal League Conference in Pierre on October 7th through 10th for the 2291. Then on number 16, you've got the same travel request for Jason and Joel, and the amount is $904. Why do you need the additional $904 for the two lawyers from your offices?
I think I can answer that very quickly. The first one is actual for the travel, or I'm sorry, for the registration fee. The second one is their traveling expenses. We didn't quite get it right, but thank you for--
Okay.
Very good catch. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public? Let's see, that was through 13. We have 51, which is outside our scope, and 97. Seeing no further speaker request forms on items 2 through 46, the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent item 2 through 46. Chair would ask if any items 2 through 46 need to be removed. I will be removing item 26. If there are any additional, please turn on your light. Any additional? Mr. Green.
Item 7, please.
Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 28, please.
28, thank you. Any additional items, items 2 through 46 that need to be removed from the consent calendar? Not the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar items 2 through 46, with the exception of 7, 26, and 28. So move. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item number 7, which is under Public Works. And so, Mr. Kroger, could you please read item number 7, please?
Item number 7 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign an agreement with MG Oil Company regarding the donation of certain land for right-of-way along Universal Drive for the Universal Drive Reconstruction Project. Move approval.
We have the motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that today Council for MG Oil contacted our office, and they've requested that this item be continued, so I suggest you refer this back to Public Works.
Okay, do we have a substitute motion? Back to Public Works. Okay, we have a substitute motion, which is take this item back to the next Public Works meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item number 26 under Legal and Finance. And Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 26 is approval of the travel request for Ron Johnson to attend Boyd's Aviation Forecast Conference in Aspen, October 4th through 7th, in the amount of $2,070. That's 28.
I'm sorry?
I didn't pull 26. I pulled 28.
No, I pulled 26, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. And just the reason this was pulled was the person that we're looking at sending, Ron Johnson, will not be able to attend. And what we'd like to do is actually change it out for Jerry Mitchell, who is actually still on the airport board. So, if we could have that motion, please. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, scratching Ron Johnson and inserting Jerry Mitchell. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 28, please.
Item number 28 is authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign revised contract for private development tax increment district number 41 for City of Rapid City between Stone Ridge LLC and City of Rapid City. I yield to the floor.
Okay, could we have a motion for discussion, please? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? I'm sorry, Tim, our lines are working very well. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. It appears to me in reading this that this is a routine change. I was just wondering if I could have a brief update, however, on how this affects the cost of the TIF and whether there are additional costs to the taxpayers in making this change.
Let's go to Marcia Elkins. And just for, especially those that are watching on TV, we're having some difficulties with some of our cameras. So, the cameras aren't quite working properly, and the lights up here aren't quite working properly either. So, if I, if I miss you, if you intended to speak, please just indicate, wave or do something, throw something at me. Marcia.
Thank you. This project plan was revised in July of this year. The project plan now specifically has two phases of development, and it shifted some of those costs between the various line items. And again, there was no increase in the overall cost, and it did not increase the cost to the City of Rapid City. It simply reallocated some costs between line items and those phasing items. Again, I believe it was July 21st that you acted on the changes to the project plan.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Quaker, you're still at the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any additional comments? Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the non-consent items, items 47 through 60. And the chair will look for a motion to open the public comment on items 47 through 60, please. We have a motion and a second for discuss, or to open the discussion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do have some speaker request forms. And starting in, let's see, it just says Whitehead. I don't have a first name here. Item 51. And if you could, just identify yourself for the record, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Lorraine Whitehead, 2105 South Valley Drive. I am speaking in against the annexation of the South Valley area. Having been in this area for a while, we have fire, we have police, we have the water. What benefit are we really gaining by being annexed? To my knowledge, we are not going to have a closer fire department for at least two years. We are not going to see an increase in our water value or the improvement in our water. And most importantly, we are not going to see a benefit of our streets. You can honest and truly say that this city keeps the streets very poorly. I work at the hospital. I know what it is like to come up Fifth Street at 6:30 in the morning when it has not been plowed, when my street has been plowed by the county. And I live, work by the ambulance entrance, so I know what those ambulances are doing. And you're expecting to take more street coverage and all of this and, quote, "Give us better service." I don't see that happening. So, I would like to see that this be either put to a vote of the City of Rapid City's people. Are they willing to put out this kind of money to have less services in their own area? And I guess I can go back to the Walmart issue. It took a vote of the city to see that we wanted it when this council did not want it. I stand my case.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitehead. We also have a speaker request form on item 51 also. And I believe it's Ed, is it Anderson? There again, Ed, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Ed Andrews. I live at 2806 South Valley Drive, or Cactus Drive. The street cleaning is a big concern of mine because that's my weather forecaster. When I get up in the morning, it's 6:00 to go to work. If that street's plowed, I know I can get to work. If that street hasn't been plowed, I can lock my truck in four-wheel drive, and I know it's going to take me 45 minutes at least to get to work because the streets are not cleaned. That's one of the concerns. The other concern I have is there's a lot of people out there that have animals, horses, and cattle. What's going to happen to them? Are they going to have to give them up? We kind of like the rural living out there. And I cannot see any benefits that we're going to gain from this annexation. I missed a couple of the earlier meetings because my job calls me out of town a lot. I made this one. One of the things I had heard earlier is that there wasn't going to be any problems as far as a tax increase, but then I heard somebody in here was proposing a tax increase on property taxes. So, now that we got kind of a two-fold story there that I'm getting. And like I said, I urge you all to vote against it. And if you're not, this should be put up to a vote of the residents of Rapid Valley to whether we want to have the choice to come into the city or not. And as far as we're concerned, most of us are concerned, there is no benefit to us. So, I'd appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request on item 52 and 53 from Hanny Shaffey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hanny Shaffey with Dream Design. And on this, on these two items, I believe there's a lot of information on the website. And I sent an email Friday to modify the request of the tax increment district to reflect the comments that were received from the public. One of those was from one of the owners who asked his property to be removed from the boundary of the TIF, which we did so by adjusting the boundary of the TIF as approved before. And also, there was some discussion or some request about removing the lift station item of the TIF. And we requested that be removed, so therefore, I request that the item be approved with the adjustments as requested in the email and the maps sent to the city staff. And I thank you, and I'll be available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaffey. We also have a speaker request form on items 52 and 53 from Pat Telestis. There again, Pat, we know who you are, but if you could identify yourself for the record.
Pat Telestis. I'm one of the members of Highway 16 LLC. We own a property on the southwest corner of Kathryn and Highway 16. I think this is important, and Hanny didn't go into a lot of detail, but this sewer line really provides an opportunity to develop up to a couple thousand acres of land on the southwest quadrant of Rapid City that currently doesn't have sewer service or doesn't have adequate sewer service. Part of the cost of this TIF, and it's been reduced about in half now that the Highland Park project has been dropped off, but part of the real cost of this thing is carrying a large enough line, deep enough, to alleviate some of the problems we've now got in the Robbinsdale area and eliminate that, as well as open up that area for development. So, the property owners have gotten together on 16 and are willing to guarantee the TIF. We've got the cost of it down into a range that I think makes sense. I also want to point out that without this project, without this TIF, the proposed Black Hills Power and Light Edition and the several hundred jobs they're talking about isn't really possible. We don't have adequate sewer to do any of those things. So, I would urge you to support the TIF.
Thank you. That is all the speaker request forms that we have on items 47 through 60. The chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to ordinances, and that'd be under Legal and Finance. Item number-- finance. Item number forty-seven, Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-seven is first reading of ordinance fifty-four nineteen, fiscal year two thousand and nine appropriation ordinance. I yield to the floor.
Okay, could we have a motion for discussion, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Just by way of comment, this is actually the first step in adopting our two thousand and nine budget. The first reading is a statutorily required vote. The city council will continue to have their public discussions as far as any adjustments that they want to make on this budget. And prior to the second reading, that is typically when the council will come back with their recommendations and any adjustments to that budget. So what we're dealing with tonight is the first reading of the ordinance. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add to what you were saying, I believe we have another work session scheduled for tomorrow night. I'm not sure what the council's wishes are tonight, but I would hope that we could just approve first reading as we would approve first reading of any other ordinance and let the real work of that take place tomorrow night and substantive changes that we might want to make to it happen tomorrow night. By no means am I trying to say council members shouldn't talk about this tonight if they choose to, but I think the real work will be done on this tomorrow night and then at second reading.
Yep, very good. Further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hancock.
Just a question. I've had many of my constituents ask about the seven and a half percent increase, and I'd like to have some of that cleared up if we could, because I think at the council, when we had the budget meeting, we had talked about this, and I think it should be cleared up by the sense of how that works and what is really happening with the budget on that and why we're doing it. I don't know who we need to talk to on that, but we did give the raises for twenty-one and below, and now we're at twenty-two and above. And I think some of that should be cleared up for many people's sake, because a lot of the constituents are asking me and other council members about seven and a half percent, or the seven percent increase on some of the people that were brought up. So I don't know who needs to answer that, but if they could, how that works.
I'll start, and then we're going to go to Kevin Tome, who is basically our community resource director. I'm going to try and do this off the top of my head. In two thousand and two, the city council actually adopted the Condry and Associates wage study. And in there, there was recommendations as far as getting everybody up to the midpoint. In other words, I think it was close to fifty different communities, and if you take the midpoint, in other words, that's the average between the high and the low wages for a specific position. The recommendation was to bring everybody up. The city council at the time, in two thousand and two, did not have, I'm going to look to Kevin Tome here, it's about one point six million dollars of additional wages that would have been required to implement the plan at that point. The council didn't have the available money, so what they did was they phased it in, and the discussion was that they would allow the increases or the raises for the twenty-one and belows to be implemented first, and that the twenty-two and aboves would have to wait until the twenty-one and belows received their full benefit, and then they came back and adjusted the twenty-two and aboves. And like, how am I doing, Kevin? And my apologies, because I was off the council and the legislature during some of this time.
If I may, that's correct. And the only other issue was just reducing the compression that existed in the pay scale from two thousand up to two thousand and eight.
Okay, very good. Deb, I'm sorry. Alderman Hancock, you're still at the floor, ma'am.
So we started this, and we decided eight years ago or seven years ago from now, or from the past, to bring this forward. First, the twenty-one and below, if I'm correct, and then the twenty-two above. And now we're finishing up the last year of the twenty-two above's pay scale.
That's correct.
Okay. I guess that's what I needed to know. And I think the public needed to know that, it's funny how we can put in the paper that we have a balanced budget at this point. And then we're going to use, if we don't give the employees their raise at this point, from the same alderman suggested that the two hundred thirty-three thousand go to nonprofits. Now, how can you not give somebody a raise, but you would use it for something else for nonprofits? It seems unclear to me, and I just don't understand this at this point. When you bring up issues, you should bring up all the facts and everything you have said. So to be clear, I just wanted to make sure the public knew at this point. We're just trying to be fair to the employees. When we're looking at raises or we're looking at people getting paid, we have to take the whole city. There's many people that get paid that in Rapid City. And I think at the last session, we had talked about all this, and I think the facts have been brought out. It's unfortunate sometimes that it's put a little bit differently in the paper by other people, that we just discussed it. And it's put, I'm just kind of thinking, and I don't understand why people do this to other people and don't put in the facts. I think we're being fair to the seventy-two and above. The only ones that were talked about were six people. I would hope this wouldn't be a case on something that it was just the six people that they had a problem with. This is seventy-two employees that we are trying to give a raise to, not just six. So we should look at the whole study, we should look at the whole facts, and we should treat people fair. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure which alderman council president Hancock was referring to when she indicated a desire to take all of the money and put it to nonprofits. Certainly wasn't my position. I think it is a fair discussion to have, noting that the Condry study was adopted long ago, before I was on the city council, was adopted in two thousand and one. And again, in the part of the implementation was adopted in the first part of two thousand and two, before I was on the council. And I think that it's only fair to have that, have the discussion, noting that the city has been quite generous in the last few years for pay increases for top officials. And my recollection is, is that pay grades twenty-one and below did not receive seven and a half percent compound increases. Perhaps we can have some clarification on that tomorrow night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I think as fruitful as this discussion might be, I'm not sure what it's lending to the process of actually passing a budget unless, my recommendation to council would be, unless we're going to make some changes tonight, I think it's all just discussion. I think, again, tomorrow, we'll sit around the table down here, we'll have this discussion, we'll make changes, we'll do what we do as we get to the end of coming up with some changes to the budget that's the first reading of the appropriation. So I would just hope that, although I think it is good discussion, if it's not moving us further along of passing a budget for the City of Rapid City for two thousand and nine, I don't know what we gain from it tonight. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for our city attorney in reference to the ordinance that.
Sure, go, ask your question, please.
My question would be, when we pass these ordinances, is this an all or nothing type situation? I mean, do we have to vote on the entire thing? Or can we, if we feel so, we could piecemeal it?
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. The council votes on an ordinance in total. However, you have the opportunity to offer amendments and make changes to the document. But when it comes time to vote on the final approval, it is whatever the state of the document is at that time. So what you have before you now, as I understand it, is the presentation of the mayor's budget. Typically, what the council has done during the work sessions is they have decided on changes that they want to make, and those are incorporated by the amendment process. So for example, if an alderman wanted to add money for a specific program, they would offer that as an amendment. The council would vote on the amendment, and if it's approved, then that would be included in the full body of the ordinance. If it's not approved, then it's obviously not included in the full body. At the end of the day, when all of the amendments have been considered, you vote on the entire budget as an, as all package.
Alderman Wyffenbach, you're still at the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When would appropriate time be to make an amendment to the budget?
Jason Green.
The council has the ability to offer amendments anytime an ordinance is before them, so you could do that now. The typical practice of the council, though, is to wait until the work session or until second reading. But it's not inappropriate to offer them tonight if you like.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hancock. Motion on the floor is for approval of first reading.
And I appreciate what you said, Malcolm Chapman. I guess that was my point, is when we have discussion, let's have discussion. Let's talk about this. Let's get it all on the table. Let's not put it in the paper and put things in there before discussion is done. Let's get the facts. Let's have the discussion, and let's all be able to answer that discussion fairly. But I thank you for your discussion, Malcolm.
Okay. Motion on the floors for approval of first reading. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. With window from Alderman Sam Quaker. Item number forty-eight, please.
Item forty-eight is first reading of ordinance fifty-four twenty to establish process for allowing discharge of a sump pump into the city's sanitary sewer system by amending section thirteen oh eight point two-three-zero of the municipal code and move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number forty-nine, please.
Item forty-nine is first reading of ordinance number fifty-four twenty-one and ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the municipal code for rezoning within the described property as requested by Spurlet Consulting for Doech LLC for rezoning from general agriculture district to low-density residential district located northwest at the intersection of Bunker Drive and Alma Street. I move approval.
I don't know. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on this motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Lloyd LaCroy, Alderman LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be abstaining from forty-nine and item fifty-two.
Okay, very good.
That's for.
And I assume fifty-three also, then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. The record will reflect that. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. Oh, I'm sorry. And Mr. LaCroy, could you state the reason?
Could be the perception of conflict of interest. My wife, one of the property owners is one of the.
Applicants.
Yeah, one of the applicants.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Further discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted, in reference to abstaining and those types of items, if it would be appropriate at some time when we have these LLCs to be listed. And so there is not a perception of a problem. I would, I'd like to see these listed out in some order ahead of time, so we could, we would have that knowledge, and I appreciate.
Very good, good comment. Further discussion, motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes with Alderman LaCroy abstaining. Thank you. We're on to the legal and finance committee items. And Alderman Quaker, item number fifty, please.
Item fifty is acknowledgement of the report on comprehensive road conditions. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I very much appreciate the work, public works in putting this together. And my question is, is what is the next step for programming these items into CIP? Will there be a recommended schedule that will accompany the priority?
Let's go to Mr. Ellis, our public works director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We use this tool as a way to not only assess our streets, but of course, program these into the future five-year CIP plan. We also use this in conjunction with our water and sewer projects, because it doesn't make any sense to redo a street if five years down the road, we know we're going to replace the water line. So we take all that information into account, and we prepare the monthly CIP report, and we add projects to that. You know, on an annual basis, we take a look at all those project priorities. We use this as a method. We have about a million dollars per year that we use solely on street rehabilitation projects, and we have obligated those funds to projects that you'll find on here. If you recall, the Vision twenty-twelve program funded about three hundred thousand dollars per year for those street rehabs. So we use some of that information that's contained within this road condition rating report to determine where those dollars are most appropriately spent. So that program exists today. We do have a five-year capital improvement plan that we try to post to the website, and we also deliver copies to the council a couple times a year. So those dollars have taken into account this road condition report, and we try to assess our needs with the dollars that we have.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, you're still at the floor, sir. Anything else? Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hancock.
I also would like to thank Dale Tech. He was at the CIP. He's done a lot of work on this, and I know Malcolm Chapman had asked many questions on this. This is a great report. It's going to help us with our constituents to figure out the road condition is also bases it on priority, which is really good. That way, we know at that time, for sewer water and roads, what we need to do. This is on roads, I know, but we do have utility master plan coming up. And Public Works, you've stepped up and done a great job, and I thank Dale Tech for doing this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Same, Mr. Ellis. Do we have this posted on the website yet?
Yes, it is posted on the website.
Okay, very good. Just for the public's information, if you want to look up as far as what the city's plan is, as far as any construction, you can actually go to our website, www.rcgov.org, and you can actually find it on there. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. I think that the comprehensive road condition report is a valuable report, but in conjunction with the CIP plan, I mean, I think that that gives a full picture of not only the conditions of the roads, but how those roads are programmed in over the next five years. So this will just show, in my understanding, conditions, the other one will show where roads are programmed. So I think when you look at these two reports together, Public Works has done a fantastic job of not only identifying the conditions of roads, but also talking about when we're going to repair and fix and to what level. So I just, kudos to Public Works.
Thank you for those comments. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of Alderman Chapman's comments, are these available on the website for people that they can put the two together and get the picture of what's really going on? Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-one, please.
Item fifty-one is a request by the City of Rapid City to consider an application for resolution of intent annex South Valley Drive. I yield to the floor.
We have a motion for discussion, please. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple people in the audience that brought some questions forward. Could anybody on the staff or someone answer those questions for them, please?
Marcia, and before we do that, could you just, to everyone in the room, including those in the audience, can you explain the process as far as where we go from here? And because this is basically a resolution of intent, and there's a number of steps. Can you explain that and then address the questions, please?
I'll try to do that. Jackie, could you pull the lights down? Again, this is the next step in the direction that the council's given staff to proceed with the annexation of those areas that were wholly surrounded in Rapid Valley. This is the area south of forty-four. The first step is this intent to annex. Once this action is taken, should the council choose to do that this evening, then there is an additional notice that is given to the property owners and a second public hearing that occurs. If the council should finally adopt the annexation, there is a process where individuals may petition to have that put to a public vote. If it is put to a public vote, it's voted on by those residents of the area being annexed, as well as the rest of the residents of Rapid City. But that is through a petition process, should the council ultimately take action to annex this. There was a question about animals. The city does have animal keeping regulations. They're very similar to what's allowed in the county. It depends on the size of the property, but in many cases, because some of this area is large tracts, it may well be zone general agriculture when it comes into the city limits. I believe the other issue had to do with the snow removal, and perhaps the public works director would like to address that issue.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Robert Ellis.
Yes, once that property is annexed, the snow removal of South Valley Drive would be on our snow route removal list. Of course, that being one of the major accesses or the only access in and out, that'll definitely be on our list of areas to hit when we do have snow events.
Anything else? Let's see, Alderman O'Krepke, you're still at the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Then the last question that they brought up was the property taxes. Can anybody address that?
Well, go to Marcia Elkins.
You have linked online a copy of the full annexation study, and it goes through the individual mill levies. There are some mill levies that increase and some that drop depending on the category in which the property is. I think there were six categories that were shown in the chart on the.
I think there were six categories that were shown in the chart on the computer, so that you had that information. And again, as part of this process, those individuals be noticed of the requirements contained in the annexation study. Typically, what we've seen is that if your property is identified for agricultural purposes, you see a drop. If it is for residential purposes, you see an increase.
Thank you. Anything else?
If I may, Mayor.
Yep.
Did we address your, all your questions, or did you have any other ones? If I could, Mayor. I appreciate the latitude just a little bit.
What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask you, do you have a specific question? Because we typically don't allow public comment after we close it. So if you have a specific question, but a general comment, do you have any other additional comments? I think you're a little bit out of line there, as far as...
I just, in, in order to kind of ease the resistance, if they have the opportunity, evidently they've never had the opportunity before, so to, you know, minimize the resistance from some of these, if they can ask another question, or if there's anything else on their mind, we could probably address it here and maybe take care of some of these concerns that some of these people have others had. So my, my, I don't have a specific question, but did we address what your concerns were?
Why don't we try it this way? I think your question is, is, do you, did this address your concerns, or do you have any other questions? I mean, that's a pretty, that's a yes or no question. And just, just for point of clarification, if the council does move forward to this and prove this tonight, there'll be multiple public hearings in the future that you're certainly welcome to bring any further concerns.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, like my first question was, so, is the snow removal? Cactus Drive, the snow is removed by six a.m. Every day, there's a snow. If it's not removed by then, there is problems throughout town, and the city's pretty much at a standstill, and the news stations are saying, no travel advised, but, and it was brought up, we only have one entrance in and out, because when you, when they went and put that bypass in, they took our second exit out. That's another concern that I'd forgotten earlier. But we only have that one in and out, and when the bypass went in, they cut that road off, they took it completely out. Is that gonna be put back in and not two years down the road? It should have been, it should have never been taken out, so that we have the access. Otherwise, the only way we got is we pull the fence pliers out and lock it four-wheel drive and go across country and cut fences. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for letting me do that.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Marsha Elkins, our growth management director.
Okay.
Would it be possible, Marsha, to gather copies of the city's snow removal policy and the county's snow removal policy, and have that information available for the council and also folks at the, at the public hearings? And the reason that I ask is, is there's a, there is a perception of difference between how the city maintains and the county maintains. And I would like to understand the, the difference, if there is one, relating to the management of South Valley Drive.
Marsha?
I defer that to the Public Works Department again. Again, they've attended our neighborhood meeting that we had on this issue, and they best could address that. I just would add the comment, we've internally talked about it, Bob Dominic is a county resident that lives outside the city limits of Rapid City, and he indicates that his driveway doesn't get plowed. So I think some of this just happens to be what area you're in and where you get, get plowed first. But Mr. Ellis may be able to address that.
Let's go to Mr. Ellis. Could you, do you understand the question? The question is, can you, if, if the council so chooses to move this along, when it comes back to us, could you bring both the county and the city's snow removal policies and give us comparative narrative of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, anything else? Thank you. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was interested in the process. My understanding is that for, to move to whatever that next step might be, the council is being asked to approve this tonight, and then if we approve the intent to annex, there will still be other opportunities for residents in that area to come and share their concerns or questions and comments. And then at that point, it'll come back to the council, and if the council then chooses to say, let's put this to a vote, we still have that opportunity to do so. Is that correct?
Let's go to Marsha Elkins, where you say, put it to the vote, I think that's by petition only, but, let's go to Marsha Elkins.
Correct. The first step was, you asked us to have a public meeting, just informal, which we did. Then this went to the Planning Commission, where they considered another public hearing the intent to annex, and your action is pending tonight. Should you act on this again, the actual annexation resolution will be considered at a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and then also before the City Council. So there are at least two more opportunities for public comment through that hearing process. If the council should choose to adopt the resolution of annexation, at that point, then there's a period in which folks can submit a petition and refer this to a public vote. Again, that vote's taken by the people that live in the annexation area and within the city limits.
Mr. Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, or, nope, you're good, okay. Motion on the floor is for approval, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item number fifty-two, please. Alderman Quaker.
Item fifty-two is a request by Dream Design International, Inc., for a creation of a tax increment financing district located along Katrin Boulevard from Fifth Street to South U.S. Highway sixteen, and then south along U.S. Highway sixteen to Samus Trail and east to Highland Crossing subdivision. Yield to the floor.
Okay. Can we have a motion for discussion, please? Okay, and the motion's for approval? Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval for discussion. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Marsha, can I ask you a question? Okay, Mayor?
Ask your question, please.
They're taking out everything on here. Let me look at this map.
Marsha, can you put it up on the board? Why don't we do it this way, I think there's probably some questions. Can you put it up on the board and just give us a brief, uh...
What they're taking out.
...discussion as far as what is being proposed to be taken out of the TIF?
I believe that you all ended up with all of the copies, so if I could borrow one of those, I'd put it on the diaries. They were all taken down the mayor's office this morning.
Here we go.
Thank you, Marsha.
This is the memo that you received on Friday today, and there's been some information distributed that proposed some new boundaries. And again, those are shown in blue. The options that the council has is, you could direct staff to make revisions based on the notes that were included in the directions on Friday, or you could act on this to approve it with the revisions to the boundaries. I believe there's one parcel identified in this area that Mr. Shaffey has distributed that does belong to Mr. Hamilton, who would ask that his property be left out of the district. Mr. Hamilton, by telephone this afternoon, indicated that, I believe it's this parcel here is also one of his corporations that he owns. I've not reviewed those documents again, this came in on Friday, and until the council directs us to make revisions to the project plan, it stands in front of you as it comes forward from Planning Commission Committee.
I'm gonna ask the council real quick. Would the council like, basically, to Marsha go through the revisions that are proposed?
Yes, please.
Okay. Marsha, could you, you, I think you have the revisions, can you point out what's different as far as the proposed revisions versus what we're seeing up on the screen?
Again, the proposal is to revise the boundaries, to eliminate the properties that Mr. Hamilton has, that incorporated this parcel here and a triangular parcel at this location. Lift the TIF components, limit the TIF components to Katrin Boulevard Gravity Sewer. That would be this sewer along here from Fifth Street to the top of the hill, and the removal of two lift stations at this location and this location. All other items involved previously in this, which were these items to the south, would be removed from the TIF based on the letter and email from August twenty-ninth.
What were those two items? I can tell you, Forest Main and a lift station, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Deb, you still have the floor?
Um, just a question. Didn't Mr. Hamilton have his property in a TIF beforehand? This, part of this TIF here? And now he must be taken out of a TIF? Did all these properties, when he was going for a TIF, Marsha, did he have all these properties in his TIF that he wanted? In Dakota land?
Dakota Canyon, I think.
Yeah, the Dakota Canyon TIF that did not get passed the Planning Commission, was sent by the Planning Commission back to the TIF committee, involved many of these same properties. I don't recall that included the Highland Crossing property, but I haven't looked at that document for some time.
Okay.
But I believe most of those in this vicinity here, as well as down Fifth Street, were included in one version or another.
Did we ever take the, can I ask her another question?
Yeah, please, ask a question.
Did we ever take that lady out over on Haynes Avenue, out of that TIF?
I believe that was left in by the council.
So I guess I'd like to do this and leave his properties in the TIF, because at this point, if he was in the first TIF that he wanted, and everybody was included, and we didn't take that lady out, to be fair, unless somebody has opposition or something else to say, I think you need to be fair. I, I know he sent us a letter, but I think the same lady that we put in General Commercial, and we needed that property, because she was in a TIF before, she was put in there, and we did not take her out. So if somebody could tell me why this would be different, I guess at this, this time, I would like, like to take that piece out as a amendment to this meaning that he should be in there at this time.
Okay. We have a couple more lights, why don't we go, take a little bit of discussion, and we'll come back and see what the, the pleasure of the council is. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm not sure if I need this question answered by Marsha or Mr. Shaffey, but if you could put that map back up again, please. Your, your proposal is to put the sewer line in the, in the right-of-way, going on the north side of Katrin, going from Fifth and Katrin all the way to the lift station on the west side of sixteen. So if it's in the right-of-way, it's not gonna be in, in anybody's property, it's gonna be in the state DOT's property.
Marsha?
Sure.
There is a proposal, as it has come forward, yes.
Thank you. I know that, well, I'm not, I'm not for sure, but I understand from previous conversations that Katrin is going to be modified, that sharp corner that's, that's just before sixteen is going to be made a little bit easier to maneuver. Now, how is that gonna affect any of the properties, and will that affect Mr. Hamilton's properties?
Marsha?
Again, I've not reviewed the right-of-way documents. The only one I'm aware that they would have a significant potential for is this small corner here. And again, my understanding is, the proposal is to put this sewer line in the existing right-of-way, because that's where it's identified as part of this TIF boundary. If, for whatever reason, the DOT changes this right-of-way, and it would get shifted slightly outside of that boundary, that portion right along that corner would not be eligible, because it would be outside the boundaries of the TIF. I believe I measured it online at Mr. O'Krepke's request, it's about thirty-five feet of frontage.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I still have some concerns with that. If, if they do move the street, or if they do move Katrin further to the north, and that does affect Mr. Hamilton's properties, how is that going to, I mean, is, if, if, right now, I'm anticipating the sewer line to go right through the, into the right-of-way, but then what happens if the state moves their, the road further to the north, and that, will that affect, will that affect the, the positioning of the pipe?
Marsha?
Potentially, yes, in that that right-of-way might be shaved off, or, and if DOT were to acquire additional land in this area, as they flatten out this corner. So potentially, they acquired additional right-of-way, that very small thirty-five-foot frontage, that could end up shifting, again, that pipe within the new right-of-way, once DOT acquires it. The only impact on the TIF is that the TIF cannot pay for anything that's outside the boundary as it's created today, or upon council action.
Okay. Mr. O'Krepke?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I'm really kind of, I'm concerned that we do this thing right, that we put the pipe, that we put the sewer line in appropriately to, so it doesn't affect some of the property owners, as well as affect where the, where the new highway's gonna go. I, I mean, how are we going to address that? I, I'm not comfortable with that answer yet.
Okay. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
You gonna answer the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear a question in there.
Well, I wasn't comfortable yet with the answers that I've been receiving yet on...
Right, I didn't, I didn't think that was a question, I thought that was a statement, but, did you have another question?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like it answered. I, I don't wanna have it, it hasn't been answered.
Okay. And, Marsha?
Again, the pipe is not, and its specific location has not been designed. There were some preliminary designs proposed at one time with the previous plating that was done in this area, but the applicants involved in this TIF have not actually done the design, which is typical of a tax increments financing district. So I don't think that staff can specifically answer. I suspect that there might be some adjustments at that location, should DOT acquire that right-of-way, and, and if that is the case, then again, there's a short stretch of pipe that might not be eligible for reimbursement through the TIF. Thirty-five foot of frontage right now in that corner. So, again, I think it's gonna be dependent on DOT's progress in terms of acquiring right-of-way in that location. We'll coordinate with them as we do on all other projects. They're aware of the sewer line needing to go in here. In fact, we've talked about the need to escalate their timeframe, so that, that we can get that built more quickly, in conjunction with the sewer, and not have conflict between the projects. But I don't believe anybody's designed that portion of roadway to the point where that we could tell where that sewer is. There's preliminary roadway plans, but again, the sewer's not been designed.
Thank you. Mr. O'Krepke, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just as a final thought, this is a marvelous project. I've been, since I've been on the city council, I've been anxious to see this sewer line come up from Fifth, from Fifth and Katrin all the way to sixteen, to help relieve some of the sewer problems we have in, through the Robbinsdale area. And I appreciate Mr. Teles's bringing that forward, because it's really important that, that we keep all that in mind, and if we can, if we can, if we can have the developers upfront the money and carry the load for us, that's, I think that's a good thing, to help the whole southeast side of Rapid City. So I'm gonna be in support of this, and, and I will, I will speak against anything that's going to hamper or delay this process. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Representative, or, I almost called you Representative Alderman. I'm used to, I'm going back to my legislative days. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, think that it's a valuable project, and I appreciate the, all the landowners who got together and who are bringing this forward, but it seems to me that would be in a little premature. Marsha said that she hasn't had a chance to review this. There are changes that are being asked to be made, as of an email on Friday. There are changes that are being proposed today about taking someone out and changing the TIF boundaries and not including property owners. In reading this email, it says something to the effect that those property owners will upfront the money, but it seems to me that there's a component in here that, about oversizing, that rightfully so, will be left to the city, that we have not had a discussion about where does that money come from. So we're being asked tonight to approve a TIF and approve a project plan, and not really sure where the city's gonna get the money to do that, or at least not, I haven't read where the city gets the money to do that. So I understand what Alderman O'Krepke said about speaking against anyone who will wanna delay this. I think it's only prudent that we delay it until the city has had a chance to review, Marsha's staff has had a chance to review, as well as to have the discussion about, does it make sense to oversize out there? And if it does, then where does that money come from? So i- if we're asked tonight to approve or deny, I will vote against this. If we're asked to maybe continue, and I'm not making that motion yet, I wanna hear what the rest of the council has to say, I think that that would be the prudent thing to do. And I do think it's a wonderful project, and I appreciate the fact that some of those other things have been taken out of the project. Those are my comments at this time.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I thought we had more discussion, but I was just wondering, again, the sewer is coming up there, and what one of the aldermen just said is that the sewer is coming past the same person that wants their property taken out. Again, no one has answered the question, why you would take somebody out if we did it to another lady that benefited from it in the end by having sewer or drainage and different things on her property. Why would, why would this be any different from that project? Do you see a difference, Marcia, that this would be any different, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, than the last TIF? We're putting properties in there that, in the end, will benefit from this sewer line and that are asked to be taken out, and I understand that's his priority. But the second set of this is, he will benefit from the sewer. He put himself in a TIF before, and he included these property owners, and no one has answered, either the council or otherwise, why that would be any different. Unless somebody, can I ask Hanny that? Maybe he knows the answer.
You want to start with Hanny?
Yes, sorry, Marcia.
Could you state your question one more time, real quick?
Hanny, by chance, did this property owner give a statement why he wanted taken out?
Hanny?
He didn't, I'm sorry. The property owner did not give reasons for that, you know, at least to my knowledge. But as far as removing him or not removing him, we just wanted the project to be approved, and we wanted to minimize our controversy. We would rather see that property be included in the TIF because it is a benefiting property.
So, at this point, you don't, it would be beneficial for this TIF in order to pay off faster if this property was in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Deb, did you have a question for Marcia?
Well, I'd just like to, if I could do that amendment where we put him, leave him in the TIF. Marcia Elkins?
Let's go to Marcia Elkins.
If I could, Mr. Hamilton and I visited on the phone this afternoon. He indicated his reasons for wanting it removed, as he did not want to see his property encumbered, that he wanted to leave that option of having a TIF on his property as an alternative that might come forward. Those were the two items that he referenced to me.
Okay. Deb, you still have the floor, ma'am.
So, Marcia, just like the other lady, we can overlap the TIF and include that in there, can we not?
That's correct. I think you are correct that there's many parallels between those two situations.
Thank you, ma'am. So, again, I make the amendment. I don't know if anybody else seconded it to leave the.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a clarification real quick because there's been a lot of discussion. Your motion is, is it to approve the.
Changes as amended.
Tax increment district?
As, the way they amended it.
Okay.
And then, except for, I'm sorry, I don't have the paper, what number it is that says that we will take that property owner out?
Yeah. And how about the property up in Highland Crossing?
That was one of the amendments that they had taken out.
Okay. Let's, tell you what, let's get the motion clarified real quick, and then we'll go to further discussion.
Did you understand my motion, Marcia?
Sort of.
Give it a try, Marcia. That's right.
Again, there is no motion on the floor, as I understand it. You have a project plan that was directed by the TIF committee. It's been acted on by the planning commission and forwarded to you without recommendation by the legal and finance committee. My understanding of your motion was to direct staff, was to approve the TIF project plan with revisions outlined in Mr. Shaffey's memo of August twenty-ninth, however, to retain the Doug Hamilton properties included in the boundaries.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would eliminate the areas shown in red. Those would no longer be part of that.
We don't have the map. Can you turn the map up?
Okay, yes.
And just for clarification, we do have a motion on the floor for approval.
Thank you.
So, Marcia, if you could start over just very quickly and show us what would be included as far as the boundaries and which would come out?
The map that Mr. Shaffey has forwarded here does show the inclusion of Mr. Hamilton's properties. That would be triangular portion here and this L-shaped piece here. Those costs that would be eliminated would be the traffic signal and the sewer line down to Highland Crossing. So, none of that would be included. It would simply be the sewer that would come up the hill to the top to tie into existing sewer, and there'd be a lift station at these two locations. That's the request of August twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Marcia.
Marcia, just there again for clarification, is the TID district still including, the recommendation, does still include Highland Crossing then?
Yes, it does.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarification. Okay. Is everyone clear on the motion?
Is keep Highland Crossing in there? No.
The recommendation that was made in the package does leave Highland Crossing in the TID district. It takes the components out as far as item number fifty-three, which is the lift station and the forced main, but it does leave Highland Crossing in the TID district.
And in that TID district, is there any costs with Highland Park in the TID? Then I'm okay with that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to, I'm going to go to Alderman Quake. Okay, let's go to Jason Green, and then I'll go to Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just further clarification on the motion. The item on the floor is the creation of the district itself. So, the only thing that the motion really needs to be concerned with at this point is the boundaries of the tax increment district. The improvements that will be funded will be taken up in the next item, which is the project plan.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Now, let's go, sorry about that, Alderman Quaker. There you go. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Question on blight. Where's the, where is the blight in this district?
Was that addressed all?
City attorney.
Okay. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I've offered my opinion to the council in written form. I believe that the specific factors that would support a finding of blight, that question should be directed to the applicants.
I don't have that written form in front of me. Could you read it, please?
Mr. Green.
Advice of what your opinion is.
I provided that in writ form to protect the attorney-client privilege with regard to communications between an attorney and the council. So, unless the council's going to vote to waive the attorney-client privilege, I would not be able to read that at this point in time. I did send it to various council members by email.
Did you want to ask Marcia Elkins or the applicant the same question, Sam, or?
Yeah, I would just like to have clarification of that, Marcia or.
Let's go to Marcia Elkins, growth management director.
Thank you. The discussion at the tax increment financing committee focused on the fact that there was not adequate sewer in this area, which resulted in the open areas not being able to be developed because of the inadequacy of the utilities in that vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Quake, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make the logical inference that it's the opinion of the city attorney's office. This is not a blighted area. I'm at a significant disadvantage at the moment because I do not have access to read that memo, and I don't think that it's fair to ask me or other council members to make a decision tonight on the fly when there's been amendments requested. We don't have all of the information available. This is a very large on a TIF. We have a new process right around the corner that will soon be implemented, and I think that a continuation and a review of the suggested amendments by the tax increment financing district is reasonable and prudent, and that is my recommendation.
So, that's a motion, sir?
No, I'm seeing where the discussion.
Seeing for discussion. Okay, very good. The, I think I have this, the substitute motion actually, how should we, Jason, would you recommend dealing with this as an amendment or substitute motion? Okay, substitute motion on the floor is for approval with the, basically amended TID. Let's see, was there any amendments to the boundaries at all, or it's a straight approval, correct? Okay, as presented. So, keep in mind, we're not talking about any of the project costs. We're strictly talking about the boundaries of the TID. Okay? Further discussion. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, received the email on Friday. There's some understanding where the council's going with the discussion. I'm overall in favor of doing something on Katron Boulevard with the sewers. I think it's a good project in that regard. For me to, I mean, first of all, I would like to apologize to our staff for being put on the spot without, without having the information given to her on Friday, and we're grilling her about questions that I don't think that are probably appropriate or fair in reference to the period of time that she's had to review it. I think there's been substantial changes to this TIF, and I think with people wanting left out, I'm not even sure who is all involved in this TIF. I don't know that it's all listed. I think every time one of these comes forward, we ask for that information. I don't see it here. In reference to this, I'd like to take this item and the next item together, if that's possible, and make a continuance motion.
Why don't we do it this way? If you want to offer us a second substitute, or second substitute motion to continue, and then we'll take the second one off. I think it's, I don't think they're germane enough.
That's what I'd like to do. I'd just like to continue it with an opportunity for the staff to prepare themselves, not giving the information on Friday and on the fly. I don't think any of this stuff, Alderman Chapman had alluded to that, Alderman Quaker alluded to it, that there's information that's missing to make a good prudent decision. I can't imagine that the council could vote on this tonight and make a good prudent decision, so I'd like to continue it, so everybody involved gets a fair shake. The people that are bringing this forward, the people on the council, everybody involved gets a fair shake. Our staff, we're putting her on the spot here by on-the-fly questioning it. It's just not appropriate, so that would be my amendment.
Okay. And was continued for two weeks to the next council meeting?
Continue for two weeks.
Okay, very good.
Second.
We have a second substitute motion and a second to continue this item to the next city council meeting. Discussion on that. Marcia, do you have a comment?
Yes, it would be helpful to staff if we had some direction as part of that motion as to what you would like to see in the revised project plan. If you'd like us to revise it as per the memo of Friday, or if there was other direction for what you'd like to include it, then we could have the revised document to you so you could vote on the document with those changes incorporated into it, if that's your desire.
Thank you, Marcia. And just to clarify, that is, I would believe would be appropriate, would be to revise it as per their request, so you understood where it was, and then we could get the information ahead of time. We'd understand where it's at. And also include a list of every owner in this LLC so we understand, you know, and the properties that they're all being approved or improved by this sewer line, so I would add that to that.
Okay. We have a second substitute motion, and we have a second. I think Alderman Chapman seconded that motion, and that is to continue this item to the next city council meeting with the direction to come back with proposed amendments as per the memo we received by the applicants. Is that correct? Okay, very good. Discussion on the continuation motion only, and that's, we will hold it to the continuation motion only, please. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Is, to support what Marcia Elkins was asking, now, does this include leaving Hamilton's property off? Just a yes or no?
The motion on the floor is, per the recommendation, the memo, in that memo, asked to exclude Mr. Hamilton's property.
Thank you very much.
So, the answer is yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clear, I mean, I think that the project is a good project. My reason for wanting it continued is because we've had thirty minutes worth of discussion on this, and it seems to still be some confusion up here about what's going on with the project. Marcia asked for some direction. I would also like to see as part of that, when he comes back, if staff, if Public Works believes that oversizing is the right thing to do out there, then let's have that discussion as a piece of this to say, yes, we should oversize. And then also, as a part of that, then where is staff recommending that the money come from to do that oversizing? So, I'd like to see that as it comes back to the council.
Very good. Good comments. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I don't mind if we continue this. I think it's beneficial to the staff, but I'm trying to figure out, if I'm correct, Hanny just said that he would like those properties in there, and he's the applicant. The request would have to come, I think, from the other applicant when we're going through that. So, at this point, I would like to clarify that with the motion. Are we going with what the applicant wants, or are we going with what has suggested by somebody else?
The motion on the floor is, the second substitute motion included the recommendations per the memo. The memo asks that Mr. Hamilton's property be excluded from the TID. So, that is the motion on the floor, and that is a second substitute motion, so there's no more room for any additional motions.
So, can I ask Mr. Hanny a question?
If it's to the continuation motion, yes, please.
Yes. Hanny, if we continued this, at this point, did you want to leave the applicant in the process or not?
You know, actually, I would like to maintain the project or the district boundary the same as applied for. You know, we wanted, we requested it to be taken out in that memo because we wanted to minimize controversy, which is really not.
So, the question is, Hanny, did you, on here, he is in the project. Did you want him per request, and that's what I'm asking whoever made the continuance?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to keep that property in.
Thank you. Was that the motion maker's intent, sir?
Okay. Thank you. Let's go, let's see. Let's go, Malcolm, is your light still on? Okay, very good. Let's go to, and Deb's off. Okay, we have no further lights. The motion on the floor, I'm going to, and I'm going to go to Alderman Kroger in just a second. The motion on the floor is a second substitute motion to continue for two weeks. That is the motion on the floor. So, if we could have discussion to that, there is some direction from the council, and that direction is to bring back the information and present it as what was presented or asked for within the memo, which would take out Mr. Hamilton's property. That is the motion on the floor. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor. I was beginning to wonder what the motion was. We were, I thought the motion was to continue, and then all of a sudden, we're trying to add stuff on to it, and I don't know how you could add stuff on to a continuation. So, I can certainly support the motion on the floor to continue only.
That is, the motion on the floor is to continue only. I mean, that is the appropriate motion on the floor. Okay? Any further discussion on the continuation motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-three, Alderman Quaker, if you could please just read that in.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifty-three is a request by Dream Design International, Inc. for a project plan, sorry, located along Katrin Boulevard from Fifth Street to South US Highway sixteen, and then south along US Highway sixteen to Samus Trail, and East Highland Crossing subdivision moved to continue to the next council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the next council meeting. Any discussion on the continuation motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the Public Works Committee items. Item number fifty-four. Alderman Kroger, could you please read in item fifty-four, please?
Item number fifty-four is to approve request by Fisher Furniture to erect a tent in the public right-of-way at seventeen-ten West Main Street, beginning September twenty-third until October fourth, two thousand eight, and naming the city Rapid City as an additional insured. I'd move approval.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a question. Is there any additional cost to the taxpayers on this, Jason, by getting additional insured for a personal private property? Or I guess it's private.
Let's go to.
Private citizen for public right-of-way.
Jason Green.
Thank you, Mayor. There would be no cost to the taxpayers. Listing the city as an additional insured would be a cost that would have to be borne by Fisher Furniture.
And by your memo today, at this point, we have done this how long?
I don't know how many times this request has come forward. It seems to be an annual request.
And how many do we have of these requests or exceptions in the public right-of-way with us being additional insured?
This is the only one I can think of right off the top of my head where the city requires being named as an additional insured, and I suspect that's because this is about the only place you'd do it. I've suggested that you not do it in my memo to the council members today for the reason that I don't believe it's consistent with the obligation to hold a right-of-way easement for the public trust. If the council does want to authorize this, I think it is absolutely in the public interest that you require the additional insured language, hon of them.
So, if we are the additional insured at this point, we could be a second on a lawsuit on the additional insured?
Jason?
The additional insured language would provide some protection to the city in the event that there is a lawsuit. So, rather than making it more likely that we would be sued, it would provide us an additional resource to dispose of a lawsuit if one is filed against the city as a result of something that happens in this particular right-of-way while there are obstructions permitted in it.
So, it seems like if you were going to, as we know from other lawsuits that we have, that they'd go after the bigger guy than they would the little guy first. So, we're putting ourselves, I think, again, and I know, I have talked to some other people on this, putting a tent in the public right-of-way on seven-ten West Main Street. They have done it for, I don't know how many years, but again, and it's exception for one person at this point with an additional insured as the city. And I believe that at this point, if we additional insured, they're going to go after the big guy, which is the city. So, in this case, it can cost the taxpayers money if something does happen. So, I know, go ahead, Jason.
Jason?
Certainly, if the city is sued, the taxpayers bear the brunt of that. However, by including the additional insured language, that provides the city an alternate avenue to seek payment from Fisher's insurer. The only way that you need this language is if you approve the request, which I've suggested that you do not do. By requiring that the city be named, you're providing as much protection to the taxpayers as you possibly can.
And I appreciate this, but again, with exceptions like this, I think we need to really be assured at this point, and this is the only one we know of with this exception at this point with a tent in the right-of-way. at this point with a tent in the right-of-way, that I won't be agreeing with this, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm a little bit confused because I did receive an email earlier from our city attorney's office, and I'm not sure, a question was asked earlier about an email that we received, and it was attorney-client privilege, but we feel free to discuss this one, I'm not exactly sure, maybe you could explain that to me, first of all, and secondly, I was hoping that you could explain that email to me, because I, I printed it off and I accidentally left it in my car, but I think in your, your opinion was the city council didn't have the right to allow this to happen, if I recall, so maybe if you can explain those two questions, thank you.
Okay, Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with regard to this matter and how it differs from the TIF opinion, the TIF opinion is a new matter that I am offering to the council on a confidential basis, I have previously made the comments regarding the use of public right-of-way, and the council has had extensive public discussions about those, going back a number of years, prior to many of the current members of the council serving, the opinion that I have offered to the council on this is that a public right-of-way easement is required by law to be held by the public body in trust for the benefit and use of the public as a whole, not for the benefit of a single individual adjoining landowner, so when the council authorizes a private person to use public right-of-way for private purposes, especially private commercial purposes, it really risks destroying the character of the easement as public in nature, even if it is for a limited time, so I think it's fairly clear in the law that it's inappropriate for any governing body, whether it's the city council, county commission, state, sanitary districts, whoever, to allow public right-of-way easements to be used for private purposes, regardless of what the purpose is, whether it's putting up a sign, erecting a tent, anything like that.
Alderman Wyfenbach, still have the floor?
I just need a little bit of clarification, because if I recall, the email, and I don't have it in front of me, and I'm sorry about that, but I, it said that, you'd said we do not have the right, I guess that's a point for me on whether I'm gonna vote for this or not, if we don't have the right to do it, in your opinion, I'm not gonna vote for it, and I will make a motion to deny it.
Jason?
It's my opinion that it's not legally permissible for the council to authorize this.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second for denial, discussion on that motion, Alderman Wyfenbach, did you have any other comments? Okay, very good, let's go to, I'm gonna go to, let's see, that was a substitute motion, we can go back to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I guess that was my point, with forty-eight pages of exceptions that we have on the book, none of this has been ever done before, except for this one exception, so I guess that is my motion for denial as well, there hasn't been any other exceptions for this with forty-eight pages of exceptions, so at this point, I will say denial as.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I'm not in support of the substitute motion on the floor to deny, we've, you know, we've had this discussion over the years many, many times, actually probably just about every year, and one of the reasons is, you know, that we, we decided to approve originally was that would be, the city would be named as additional assured on that property, and when you talk about right-of-way, I, I guess maybe some of you, I don't know if everybody up here is familiar with where that tent sits, but when you think of right-of-way, basically you think about right next to the street, that's normally where the right-of-way is at, and if you drive by this tent, it's actually in between lots that Fisher Furniture owns, and actually the tent probably sits in from the street, farther away from the street than his buildings do, you know, I guess, you know, whatever the wish of the council, but I, like I said, this has been, and I had a discussion for many years, and maybe one of the reasons Fisher Furniture is the only exception to the list of forty-eight pages, or whatever that Ms. Hadcock talked about, is maybe he's the only one that made, asked for an exception so far, I don't know, but I would hope that we would deny the current motion on the floor and move approval as we have in the past, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is a substitute motion for denial, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. I'm gonna go to Malcolm Chapman, typically, and just for clarification, typically when I start the cadences, as far as that, I don't allow them to pop a light up at the last minute, I usually don't recognize them, but, yeah, Malcolm drank, Malcolm drank too much coffee, so we'll go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as promised, it was decaf earlier, just, is there anyone here from Fisher Furniture to speak to this?
Okay, motion on the floor is a substitute motion for denial, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We, let's take a roll call, please.
No.
Kroger?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
No.
Martenson?
Aye.
Wyfenbach?
Aye.
O'Krepke? Chapman?
So that motion fails on a four to three vote, we're back to the original motion, original motion is for approval, any, whoops, can I turn that off, any further discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let's take a roll call, I bet I can tell you what the answer is, but let's take the roll call, please.
Kroger?
Aye.
Hadcock?
No.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Wyfenbach?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
Five to two?
Five to two, and just for clarification, since this is not an ordinance, a simple majority works, correct? Okay, very good, motion passes, we will move on, we're on to bids, Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor, we do have five bid items on the agenda this evening, the first one, item number fifty-five, is for Universal Drive Reconstruction Project, we received three bids as listed, staff is recommending reject all bids and authorize the staff to go out for bids a second time.
We have a motion and a second to reject all bids and allow staff to go out and rebid, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item fifty-six is the Allen Avenue Alley Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project, we received four bids as listed, staff is recommending accepting the bid from RCS Construction Incorporated in amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid from RCS Construction for three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number fifty-seven is the Levy Storm Sewer Flap Gates Project, we received three bids as listed, staff is recommending accepting the bid from Mainline Contracting Incorporated in amount of ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the Mainline Contracting, Inc. bid of ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number fifty-eight is the Wisconsin Avenue Water Main Reconstruction Project, we received three bids as listed, staff is recommending accepting the bid from Mainline Contracting Incorporated in amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and four dollars.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the Mainline Contracting, Inc. bid of four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred and four.
Nine hundred and four dollars, thank you, I want to shorten them four bucks. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number fifty-nine is the Dano Drum Building Corrosion Restoration Project, we received one bid from RCS Construction Incorporated in amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, staff was recommending we accept that bid.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to make an assumption relating to item number one, that the reason that we rejected it was because it came in so much higher than the advertising authority and the engineer's estimate, with this item, it is, the bid, if we accept it, would be more than double the advertising authority, and I might be inclined to support that if there were more bids, so we could know whether that one bid is, is reasonable, and so it seems to me perhaps that we should, in being consistent with our earlier action, we should reject this bid as well and go back out for bids and try to come closer to that advertising authority, Jim, do you have any thoughts on, on why we would proceed with this as is?
Let's go to Jim Preston, you might, you want to defer to Robert, or?
Well, I can address portion of it, advertising for, authority is our best guess, initially what it's gonna cost, later on, they do an engineer estimate, which is one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I would like to have Mr. Ellis address your, I think the main point of your question, why we would accept this bid, since it's over the engineer's estimate, if I could have him address that.
Okay, let's go to Robert Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor, we did contact a number of contractors to see if there'd be any interest, if we were to reject this, rebid it, and we can't find any other contractors outside of RCS who have the time and ability to do this work, it is a somewhat specialized building structure, and there aren't a number of contractors that can do that type of project, so we do recommend a ward, the condition of that roof is in pretty severe rusting condition, so it does need to be replaced as soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I'm just concerned about the fact that we only had one bidder on this project, and I sure wish there was something that we could do about that.
Thank you, let's go, let's see, Robert Ellis, have no further lights, the motion on the floor is to accept the bid from RCS Construction for one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, everyone. We are on to items from the mayor and council items and liaison reports, I do have a fifty-nine A, and Alderwoman Deb Hadcock, and I just wrote down special, I'm not sure what, can't remember what that was, oh, oh, special council meeting, there you go, let's go to Deb Hadcock.
Jackie? Freaking out. Jackie had asked for tomorrow night if we could take a roll call, or however you do that, to see who was coming to the special council meeting for the budget tomorrow night, I don't know if you just ask people, or how we could, because we don't have a count at this point.
Okay, other than, other than wanting to know, this meeting has been noticed? Okay, so whether we have a quorum or not, we can still meet, okay, very good, and there, is there a requirement, let's see, a special council meeting, Jason, is there a requirement to have a quorum to take any action, or are these recommendations on them?
The, if less than a quorum is present, then no amendments could be made to the ordinance, you could certainly have discussion about the budget, and forward that to the full council for consideration at second reading, but there, there's no prohibition on having the discussion if you don't have a quorum, you just can't take formal action.
Why don't we do it this way, let's, let's do this, Alderman, or Alderwoman Olson is actually out of town, so we know she will not be there, we also have a vacancy in Ward Five with Alderman Herobud, is there anyone else that is not able to attend tomorrow's meeting?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I teach until six o'clock, six fifteen, but I'll get here as soon as I can, right after that.
Very good, and we're scheduled to go in at six, is that correct? Okay, anyone else that has a conflict? If not, I think you have your answer, I think it looks like we'll have a quorum, thank you for bringing that up, we also have item fifty-nine B, Central State's Fair update from Ron Wyfenbach, Mr. Wyfenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, after attending the last Central State's Fair meeting, and their initial numbers came in that their, their fair revenues had increased somewhat, so I would make it an assumption that they, that overall, the fair was a good success, without having a, a list of all the participants that give their time to make that fair successful, and without all the volunteers that run that fair, it would never be possible, I'd just like to thank them, and I, I don't have a list of each one of them individually, but overall, I would just like to thank anybody that volunteered their time for the fair and the rodeo and those types of things that, from the city, and thank you for bringing all those people to the city to spend their money here, so overall, it was assessed, thank you.
Thank you, and if I'm not mistaken, I think they have well over a hundred volunteers every single year.
I would, I'd say probably in the hundreds, definitely, and, and non-paid, so there's just a few of them that get paid.
Very good, thank you, everyone, let's take up item number sixty, which is under staff items, this is a Vision 2012 update, let's go to our public works director, Robert Ellis.
Just a couple of items to report on, project number four, which is Police Evidence Traffic Transit Building, we did add in the recent agreement with Geiger Architecture for the design amendment, and updated some of the reimbursables, we'll get back from FTA on the project when that is finalled out, then on project thirty-B, which was the downtown parking block seventy-five, third level addition to the ramp across the street, there was the seven hundred thousand dollars addition that was approved at the September fourth city council meeting, so those are the only two changes with the Vision 2012 program.
Okay, any discussion, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, the other day, and noticed that they have a municipal parking garage downtown, and I thought they did some pretty creative things in terms of parking, where they offer free one day for visitors in town and that sort of thing, I was just wondering, where is the parking discussion, and who should I give pictures to that I took of the, of that structure, I mean, I'll give them to the mayor.
Yep, just so you know, I believe that we have set September twenty-ninth as the public hearing for the parking plan, and let's see, I believe Mr. O'Krepke is, was chairing the subcommittee as dealing as far as parking plan, but if you want to forward it to my office, and we'll certainly get it distributed through, to the rest of the council, thank you, any further discussion, any further questions? I guess, let's look for a motion to acknowledge your report. We have a second, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, this takes us to the public hearing items, items sixty-one through one oh three, and the chair would look for a motion to open the public hearing for items one, or from sixty-one to one oh three, please.
Some move, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, that takes us to the continued public hearing consent items, this is item sixty-one through ninety-one, and the chair would ask if you would like to, let's see, I'll tell you what, we need to go back, we do have a speaker request form on a couple of these items, the first one, let's see, Adrian Forretti, how close am I? Item number ninety-two, if you could just identify yourself for the record, and item number ninety-two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Adrian Forret, I live at one-one-nine Southbury Pines Road, and I actually own the home that was formerly my parents' with my sister, and I, I just have one question that I would like to have reflected in the minutes, Jackie, this person probably deserves one of those raises you were talking about, I, I think the, the future land use plan has caught many of us by surprise, and I don't know that the general public really understands the scope of what's being planned, I know many of my neighbors were unaware of some of the details in the west neighborhood plan, and I realize that's not what's up for discussion, I, we're talking about the overview, but this is my question, on behalf of all the property owners and homeowners all throughout the city, will condemnation proceedings be used by the city as a tool to implement the various projects, should a homeowner decide that they don't want to sell some land that's in the way of a road, for instance, do I need to sit up and worry at night at one-one-nine Southbury Pines Road?
Typically, the answer is no.
No, I don't need to worry?
I wouldn't worry, I, I assume what you're referring to is, is the major street plan, the major street plan, that actually shows major streets as far as general routes,
yeah.
Just, you know, is typically, that is a conceptual plan, there's no plans to actually move forward with any of those streets at the time, that is typically driven by development, so the short answer is no, I don't- So the short answer is no, I don't think you need to lose any sleep.
Okay, and what if, what if development drives a road forward and said, oh, we need this road, and my property's in the way? What then?
There will be public hearings. If the city was to ever use condemnation, there is a series of different meetings and notifications that would be required. So there'd be plenty of notification and plenty of opportunities to discuss it at that point.
All right. I'm going to go home and worry you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we also have a speaker request form from Kent Haig on item number ninety-six. There again, Mr. Haig, we know who you are, but if you could identify, identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kent Haig. Just here on behalf of the request for approval of item ninety-six, and here just basically answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form on item number ninety-seven. Debbie Michael-Ree, my, Debbie, did I get close?
You did.
Thank you. And there again, Debbie, if you could identify yourself for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Debbie Michael-Ree. I own Cater Two Productions, which is a local catering firm for the last nineteen years. I just want to quickly give you a little brief summary about Cater Two. It was started by myself, and a girlfriend of mine is a home-based hobby, and now we cater about five to seven times a week, employ about twelve full and part-time employees. We're involved with many nonprofit organizations. We give a lot of our food and services to WABE, the mission Habitat for Humanity. We provide catering services for the National Guard, the Forest Service, et cetera, lots of private functions, chamber mixers, et cetera. Cater Two's built a reputation for providing great food and services to a large spectrum of events and clients. Over the years, we've been asked many times to open up a restaurant that would make our food and services available on a more regular and public spectrum. That's how the vision of Uncorked was developed, and Uncorked was meant to be a full-service food and beverage facility, offering gourmet foods and specialty beverages. I think the issue that some people had originally was the fact that we'd incorporated the word bar in the name of the business, and it is no, by no means any conventional bar whatsoever. It's just kind of the term. I know if we would have probably used the word bistro, we wouldn't be here right now. It's designed to be a unique gathering place for those individuals who enjoy upscale food and beverages. It'll be non-smoking, open approximately five days a week, from about 5:00 PM to 10:00 or 11:00 PM. During the day, it's available for corporate and private lunches, cooking classes, birthday parties, tea parties, et cetera. It's also going to be the home of Cater Two. Looking at all of you guys up here, I think most of you have probably been to one of my events or another over the years. I'm sure that you'll agree that my clientele is not the loud, tire-squealing type of people that our opposition refers to. A large majority of my clients are located in the general vicinity of our proposed location. There has been tons of positive feedback and excitement about this going up over there for them to have on their side of town, something that is lacking over on that, on that side. So I ask that you approve the appeal for the commercial development of Uncorked at the Stony Creek Plaza.
Thank you, Debbie. Seeing no additional speaker request forms, we do need to leave the public hearing open, so the chair would look, ask if any items sixty-one through, excuse me, through ninety-one need to be pulled from the consent calendar. This is a continued consent calendar. If so, please turn your light on. Any items sixty-one through ninety-one? Marcia Elkins.
Sixty-nine, please.
Sixty-nine?
Close the door.
No. Any additional? Any additional? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent, public hearing consent items sixty-one through ninety-one, please, with the exception of sixty-nine. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item number sixty-nine, and let's see, that is preliminary plat. Ron, could you read that in, please?
Item number sixty-nine is a request by Dream Design International Incorporated for a preliminary plat located south of Port Rush Road and west of Dunsmore Road. I would move approval with stipulations, and I would ask Marcia just to give us an update on what those revisions are.
Marcia?
Thank you. This is a little unusual in that this plat came forward for these six townhome lots. They're showing individual utilities being extended into Port Rush Road. This information had been submitted and meets all of our requirements. However, since this came in, we've been having discussions with Mr. Shaffey and the Hamm family on the potential for providing access for the utilities along the back of these lots through an internal network of streets that will be provided for future development in that area. The desire of that is to avoid having to have repeated cuts in this brand-new road for each of those utility lines. Mr. Shaffey's asked for us to go ahead and approve this tonight, since they had previously submitted all this information. We would ask that you do that with the stipulations that were included as per the Planning Commission's recommendations, one through twelve, with one additional one that would allow the applicant to submit revised redline drawings between now and the time final plat is approved. While this setup is in compliance with the requirements, we believe that we can work with Mr. Shaffey to come up with a better solution that protects the infrastructure investment that's been made in front of that between now and the time that final plat would be submitted, and so we'd like to have that flexibility to revise the utilities through that redline process. So we would ask for approval with those stipulations and the additional one to allow revised redlines to come in before final plat to address that, should we be able to work out those changes with Mr. Shaffey.
Is that the motion?
That is my motion, Mayor.
And is that a right of the second? Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations of one through twelve plus the revision allowing for the redlines. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, we are, that takes us to the end of the public hearing consent items. Excuse me. Chair looked for a motion to close the public hearing on items sixty-one through one oh three. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying...
I do have one thing, Mayor.
Nope, nope.
I can't? Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Let's go on to, I'm going to lose my voice here. Let's go on to the consent public hearing items. This is, let's see, close that. We are, I'm going to lose my voice. Deb, you want to read the next one? We're at the end of the consent public hearing items. We're to the non-consent public hearing items, item ninety-two. And with that, Ron, could you please read that in?
Item number ninety-two is a request by the City of Rapid City to consider an application for amendment to adopt a comprehensive plan to change the Rapid City future land use two thousand eight plan overview. I would move approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that goes into the future land use plan and this overview, and I hope that people, council members and staff and folk in the community really take a look at it. This plan has some goals that talks about the contiguous growth of the community. It concentrates on new growth, unified land use and transportation systems, a commitment to neighborhoods, how to preserve and enhance existing economic base of Rapid City, to provide a variety of centers for the community of activities and employment, to ensure the preservation and proper utilization of environmental resources, preserve downtown as a community focus, a focus on neighborhoods and parks, and then it identifies unique cultural and historic areas. And this process is gone through by elected officials and folk from the public and staff and affected jurisdictions. And I really believe that if we follow this land use plan for the future, I mean, this becomes a valuable tool for our community in terms of how we'll live in the future, how we'll work, and how we'll play. And I think it could alleviate some of the issues when ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, then people come back and they say, well, I didn't realize you were going to build this in my backyard, or I didn't realize this community was going to change to that. This becomes a valuable document, which I think is what we were trying to do when we engaged in all of that discussion about Highway sixteen a few years ago. I, I'm speaking to it because I know how much work goes into it, and I would hope that people who want to live in certain neighborhoods or think about buying property in certain neighborhoods really look at this to make those sorts of decisions, because it's all laid out here in terms of what the community could potentially look like in the future. So I just appreciate the staff for all the work that's gone into all of the various land use plans.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I also want to thank Growth Management Marcia Elkins and Patsy Horton and all of her staff as well, because being on the future land use, I know Kroger's, when I first started, he was on there many a year as well, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of time to meet every Friday to figure out what the future land is, let alone the staff taking that information, having meetings, meeting with staff. Kudos to you and your staff for doing all this work. This is a lot of hard work, Marcia Elkins, and you've done that, so we appreciate you and your staff. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you. Let's go to Alder, Alderperson Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. One is on page ten of the report, there's reference to married couples without children, twenty-seven percent, and non-family households, thirty-seven percent, and then also single households. And I'm, I'm just trying to understand what a, a non-family household is.
Sam, could, do you have a page number?
Page ten of twenty-four.
Thank you so much. Marcia?
I believe the reference is to the census numbers that are gathered, and non-family would be something like several roommates that live together, which were not related, but I'll need to check that against the actual census definition and clarify that for you.
Thank you. Then the other, the other question I have is relating to parkland dedication requirements in the, in the city's vision relating to parkland and the expansion of our system as the city expands to an estimated one hundred and sixty thousand people in 2035. What, can you update us on that, on that process? And I believe that that is germane to the, the motion.
Marcia?
Each of the neighborhood plans identify future parkland that's been identified. In addition, the Parks Department's brought forward to you their plan for the future for park acquisition. But beyond that, in terms of how we actually get there, which I think is the intent of the question, is at the last Thursday morning's Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did direct staff to bring forward amendments to our ordinances to require dedication of parkland through our subdivision process. So those will be going through a hearing process for additional discussion and consideration before they would be formally adopted. So I think there is a great deal of interest in parkland, and especially in newly developed areas, and I think we're working not only on the front end of planning where it needs to be, but actually having tools to make sure that we can acquire that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, anything else? Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-three, please.
Item number ninety-three is a request by the City of Rapid City to consider an application for amendment to the comprehensive plan to adopt the southeast connector neighborhood area future land use plan. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, number ninety-four, please.
Item number ninety-four is a request by the City of Rapid City to consider an application for amendment to adopt a comprehensive plan to revise the major street plan by realigning arterial and collector streets in the southeast connector neighborhood area future land use plan. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-five, please.
Ninety-five is a request by Whittingham and Lestrange LPI for variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirements to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, water and sewer along Catherine Boulevard and US Highway sixteen. As per chapter sixteen point one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located northeast of the intersection of US Highway sixteen and Catherine Boulevard, I would move to deny without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny without prejudice. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-six, please.
Item number ninety-six is a request by Brad and Dad LLC for Kent Haig for Mall Drive LLC and Patalese for Bypass Development LLC for amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial with a planned commercial development to light industrial with a planned industrial development located north of Mall Drive and west of Dakota Craft Drive. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-seven, please.
Number ninety-seven is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by Uncorked Wine and Tapas Bar for a major amendment to the planned, planned commercial development located at fifty-seven thirty-four Shaden Lake Road. I would move approval with stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. And just for clarification, this would approve the project as per the recommendations of the Planning Commission. Very good. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for the applicant. Are you okay with these stipulations?
Yeah.
You are? Well, I'm excited about this opportunity. We're getting a, a great restaurant on the south side of town that we so desperately needed, and that's my ward, and the ward I represent, and welcome to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is, the reason he's saying is he lives down the street. Let's see, further discussion? Let's go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am excited for these people in Ward Three. Thank you.
Everyone's excited? Okay. Okay. Motion on the floor, it's too much coffee. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations per the Planning Commission's recommendations. Further discussion? Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live in Ward Five. Can I eat there?
Are you, are you excited?
I am, I'm excited. I've been one of those, very excited. I've been one of those that have used the catering service and have known Debbie for a long time, so I, I'm happy for you. I guess my question, are, are you still going to be doing things with Piece of Cake or no?
Yes, but we're moving everything over to the website.
So Piece of Cake will be moving there as well? Okay.
No, we'll stay there. You can still go eat cake there, Mel. Okay.
Okay. Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-eight, please.
Ninety-eight is a request by Philip S. Olson for Olson Development Incorporated for variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to provide sidewalk along both sides of West Fulton Street, to waive the requirement that each lot shall be provided with access from a public street, and to waive the requirement to improve[1704.78] be provided with access from a public street and to weigh the requirement to improve the access from a public street with a minimum fifty-nine foot wide access easement or right-of-way and to construct the access with a minimum twenty-six foot wide paved surface curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light conduit, sewer and water as per chapter sixteen point six of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at an eastern terminus of West Fulton Street and west of Skyline Drive. Move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-nine, please.
Item number ninety-nine is to authorize Mayor Finance Officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb, gutter, sidewalk and street light conduit along US Highway sixteen as it abuts a portion of the remainder of Lot B located west of US Highway sixteen adjacent to Tower Road and east of Sandstone Lane. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one hundred, please.
One hundred is a request by Forefront Design Incorporated for Skyline Pines East LLP for variance to the subdivision regulations to weigh the requirement to install curb, gutter, street light, conduit, water, sidewalk along US Highway sixteen as per chapter sixteen point six of the Rapid City Municipal Code located west of US Highway sixteen adjacent to Tower Road and east of Sandstone Lane. I would move to deny without prejudice in part and to approve with stipulations in part in accordance with the Planning Commission recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny in part and approve in part per the Planning Commission's recommendation, stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one oh one, please.
One oh one is a request by Forefront Design Incorporated for Skyline Pines East LLP for variance to the subdivision regulations to weigh the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, water and sewer and to reduce easement width from fifty-nine feet to twenty-six feet as per chapter sixteen point six of the Rapid City Municipal Code located southwest at the intersection of Tower Road and South Highway sixteen. I would move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one oh two, please.
Mayor, I'll turn this over to Sam Quaker for...
Very good. Alderman Quaker, one oh two, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one oh two is second reading of ordinance number fifty-four seventeen, amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code located north of Mall Drive and west of Dakota Craft Drive. Move approval with stipulations.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the rezone from general commercial to light industrial. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one oh three, please.
Item one oh three is second reading of ordinance fifty-four eighteen, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh-six of chapter seventeen of Municipal Code for rezoning from general agriculture district to low-density residential district located in the Catherine Crossing subdivision at fifty-nine thirty Bent Drive. Move approval with stipulations.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve the bill list.
Okay. Mr. Preston, could you give us the dollar amount, please?
Sure can. Thank you, Mayor. The amount that the council has is four million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Want to add one item, that's from the South Dakota Municipal League for thirteen registrations to the Municipal League meeting appear October seventh through October tenth. Amount of nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for a new total, four million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, forty dollars and twenty-nine cents. And we have motion.
Okay, and that was all right with the motion maker? Okay, and the second, correct? So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the bill list and Mr. Preston checking on this, four million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, forty dollars and twenty cents.
Twenty-nine cents.
Twenty-nine cents, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Green, do we have an executive session?
We do, and I would appreciate if the motion maker would include that the purpose is for those allowed by SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go to an executive session per SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.